And Paul Riddick. And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much.
Heavenly Father, we come to this evening as a plea, as we know how. We would like to take a moment to remember those persons who were lost in the 911 catastrophe. We would like to take special time to recognize Anthony White, a resident of Norfolk who died in that catastrophe. We ask that you give this council the ability to do this job in a fair and just manner. These are all the best things we ask in our name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Mr. Burford here. Mr. Riddick.
Here.
Smigel.
Here.
Dr. Whibley.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Win.
Here.
Mr. Frame.
Here. The motion is to excuse Mr. Prodigero, please.
Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Win.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. The clerk will read the resolution for the closed meeting.
A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council, the City of Norfolk, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, adopt the resolution. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Win.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Public hearing two. Please. At the conclusion of, there are a number of them, excuse me, there are 10, we're going to move to them first, and then we'll go to the consent agenda. There's just one item there, we'll vote at that at one time, the council will vote on the one consent agenda item. And then we'll move to the regular agenda, and there are a number of items there, there are 12 there, and we have one walk-on, which is we'll be appointing some members of the community to a Military Advisory Commission and to a Military Economic Development Commission. At the conclusion of our regular agenda, our formal agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, that's something that's not on the docket, you'll be given that opportunity. In order to have your name called, though, to come to the podium, you must have first signed a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the council, in the conference area, behind the council chambers before the meeting began. Now, we do have one very important ceremonial matter, which is a great source of pride for us, and it's Gloria Peak, Coach Peak, will you come to the podium, please, for us? We have a resolution that the city council has asked to be prepared, expressing our deep pride in your being an Olympic coach, and for all the good work you have done in this community, and we appreciate your coming down here to let us, you know, honor you. And the resolution reads, whereas Gloria Peak's love for boxing began as a young girl watching the Friday night fights with her father, led her to begin boxing while in the Navy, only to be later prohibited by boxing authorities from competing in the ring. Whereas while working as a juvenile corrections officer, she chose to apply her considerable talent and skills to coaching, opened the Montgomery Boxing Club in her hometown of Rochester, New York, and began her upward rise through the ranks of amateur coaching that took her to national and international amateur boxing championships. Whereas in 2006, she came to Norfolk to coach the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Open Spaces Norfolk's Boxing Club, and through dedication and hard work, her leadership abilities were recognized when she became the first woman selected as head coach for the 2011 Pan American Games held in Guadalajara, Mexico. Whereas in June 2012, Gloria Peak reached the pinnacle of amateur boxing, when she was appointed assistant coach to the 2012 United States London Olympics Boxing Team, thereby becoming the first woman to coach boxing at the Olympic level. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the City of Norfolk hereby congratulates Coach Gloria Peak for the pioneering role she has played in opening up the sport of boxing to women, and on her groundbreaking selection as an Olympic coach, and does further commend her for the numerous and important contributions she has made to the sport of boxing, and that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the city council, and a copy thereof be presented to Coach Gloria Peak. And Mr. Clerk, why don't you call the roll here?
Motion is to adopt the resolution. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Win.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Coach, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Can I give you? Sure, we would love, sure, we'd love to have you say anything you'd like, and make any introductions.
It's a very, it's an honor to have the council recognize the work. Anytime you work in a field as long as I have, you know, you, especially working with kids, and working in obscurity, I don't always expect to be honored or even have people notice. So, to have the council honor me in this way is great, and I really appreciate it. I also recognize the fact that it would have been, it would be really nice to be able to have the council come to Barroward Park and see, you know, exactly the jewel that you have down there, but I know that would be a difficult task. So since you can't come to me, I brought Barroward Park to you.
All right.
And I would like all of my boxers to stand, please. City Council, this is Barroward Park Boxing Program, and it's only the tip of the iceberg. We have grown tremendously over the years. In fact, we've outgrown the facility that we're in. It's been there a long time, and it's kind of fallen down around us, but the need for the program has been great and continues to be great, and the call from the community to have their kids participate in this program, because it goes beyond just the boxing. The educational piece of this program, the parents really embrace. It helps their kids to move on and become, you know, productive parts of the community or productive individuals in the community. So I'm hoping that the council will continue to recognize us, and maybe somewhere down the line, work with us to help us to continue to grow. And I thank you again, and the club thanks you.
Good. Well, Coach, thanks for taking that opportunity to remind us that we can help you, and we're willing to do that. You just, you let us know what we can do, and I think you've got some, I know you have some friends on this council, but we appreciate everything you've done with the boxing team, everything that you've done in our community, and the fact that you got a name to the Olympic team was a great honor, that we, you know, actually bask in the glory of it. I mean, not only for you, but we felt a part of it with you being there. So, so thanks, and thanks again for all that you do. Mr. Burford here was an amateur boxer at one time, but...
We used to, well, we used to box at the arena.
Oh, yeah.
Back in the day, coming from Berkeley, but I want to thank you for being an ambassador. I saw that HBO piece, and I saw you there as well. I don't know if everybody got a chance to see that, but there was following the career of the Latino young lady, and then went to the Pan Am Games. So I just thought that, then they, you know, showed you, and you were, I guess you coached both of those young ladies.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, and I've been to the gym over in Barroward Park, so not only do you work with young ladies, I know you work with all these young men, and I know you're tough, you're fair, but it's just not about boxing, it's about education, it's about building character.
Right.
And turning these young men into productive young men who will give back and one day become productive citizens in the City of Norfolk. So, thank you, Coach Peak, thank you.
You're welcome.
Committed to, again, I know that we have some challenges over there, but we're working with parks and open space, yeah, recs and open, we named them for the...
Where we're...
They changed the name on me, yeah.
Our post.
But the rec department, yeah.
Right.
And we're committed to, again, transforming that area. Thank you.
You're welcome, and we have an open door policy. Anytime any of you are in the area, please stop in, stop in for a minute, and, you know, be able to meet the kids firsthand, and check out exactly, you know, where we are and what's going on with the youth in the city. I think we are a perfect example of what's going on, so please feel free to stop in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
For what you do, I will tell you that being new to this council and coming in and working with the individuals in Barroward Park, there is not a single meeting that we have about Barroward Park that your name and what you do doesn't come up. And so, you know, if we thought that we could forget, we can't forget, because the community really appreciates what you do, and every single time there is a meeting about the park, if there, you know, anything, we can't forget Coach Peak, and we can't forget what she does in the boxing center. So it is definitely on our radar, and it's definitely a priority to make sure that you guys have what you need.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Maybe you could bring the manager over there and toughen him up. All right, well, thank you all for, thank you for coming down. He just called you out there. Yeah, and a couple ladies. He's a wuss. Yeah, thank you. Okay, we would normally go to public hearing one, but Brett, why don't we call that R3 quickly here?
Yes, sir. R3 is an ordinance designating a portion of Park Avenue as Rosie's Way.
And why don't you call the vote?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Win.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Dave, will you come to the podium for a minute, please? This is, this is not exactly a ceremonial matter, since we just voted on this, but, Dave, when we actually put the signs out, we need to vote on this, but we will have an appropriate ceremony out on the site in front of Harbor Park. We appreciate you taking time to come down here, and we appreciate you. I mean, we want you to know that. I mean, 50 years in anything, especially professional baseball, is, over 50 years, is a tribute, and you've been such a good guy to work with, be with, good ambassador for us, all the kids who have come through Harbor Park, the numbers of Little League openings, baseball openings that you have been to, the numbers of the dollars you've raised for recreational baseball, the number of young men who you've helped, you know, reach their goals in playing professional sports is legion, and so we want you to know we appreciate you. We're gonna, you know, have a ceremony out there, and of course, we're gonna have an appropriate piece of public art that looks like you somehow, has a similar, has some sort of look to you, but, but thanks for coming down for this. We'd love to hear from you, Dave, if you...
I'd like to thank the council. 51 years with the tides. Like to think I could do 51 more, I don't think so.
Yeah, we could.
But it has been never a job that's been fun, and the cooperation from the city, from the council, from the staff of the city, has made it all work so well. And having, having a name like that on a street sign is something that is humbling, and I consider it to be a great, great honor, and I thank each of you for...
Dave, in my experience, we've only done it three or four times in the history of the city, so this would be, this is special. Okay?
Thank you so much.
I know you, you know, when you're dealing with, you know, basically semantics, but 20 years from now, when they see Rosie's Way, I wish it had been Dave Rosenfield's Way, to really, you know, identify the person that we're talking about, but if it's okay with you, it's Rosie's Way, but I would have been a Dave Rosenfield Way, because of the impact that Dave Rosenfield has had, although that might be, you know, your nickname and things like that.
That's what Rosie said he wanted.
That's what you want, that's what you get.
Hey, Dave.
Plus, it would have been a long sign.
It would have been a long sign, it would have been a workaholic.
Budget cut.
Well, again, I thank you for that sentiment.
Right.
But it, you know, it's more than just me. It's been baseball and the city, and again, I thank you, it's been a great ride.
Dave, thank you for the Matt Pot days as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of my 51 years, only about 40 have been in Norfolk. It's just, it's been great, and again, the cooperation from the highest to the lowest has made it work. Thank you so much, Alibi.
And I just wanted to say, a lot of you might not know, but Dave was my boss for a period of time. I was an usher at Harbor Park, that's actually where I met my wife, and he was always a classy manager, so we appreciate everything you've done, and I've enjoyed watching that park.
Get back to your station now.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, if you want to go there...
Thank you so much, Alibi.
Go back to your station. Thank you. That's great. And Dave, you're excused, believe me, you don't have to hang around here, you've got...
I'll be quietly.
Okay. All right, public hearing one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on July 24, to hear comments on the sale of the western one half of city-owned land at 141737th Street to Marcus Bell and Drell L. Bell.
Okay, there, there's no one signed up to address the council on this matter, so call the roll, please.
Have an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain property known as the western one half of 141737th Street, Norfolk, Virginia, to Marcus Bell and Drell L. Bell for the sum of $2,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Win.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Public hearing two.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on July 24, to hear comments on the sale of the eastern one half of city-owned land at 141737th Street to Natasha A. Pitchford.
Okay, again, there's no one signed up to address the council on this matter, so if there aren't any questions, you can call the roll.
Have an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain property known as the eastern one half of 141737th Street, Norfolk, Virginia, to Natasha Pitchford for the sum of $2,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Win.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Public hearing four, please.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on July 24, to hear comments on a lease agreement between the city and teams with the purpose at the Vivian C. Mason Arts and Technology Center on property located at 700 East Alney Road.
All right, there are three members of the public who are signed up to address the council on this matter. All of them are proponents, that would be Robert Johnson, and Nathan Richardson, and Deidra Love. I don't know of any opposition to this matter, so unless you really need to, unless you want to say something, we're glad to hear from you. Otherwise, we can vote. Deidra Love, do you have anything that...
There's no opposition.
You yield to us, okay. Robert Johnson, Mr. Johnson? Okay, all right? Okay, come forward. We're glad to have you, just tell us your name and your address.
Okay, thank you. Robert Johnson, my address is 2328 Corporate Avenue, and I have a few words, is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening once again, my name is Robert Johnson, I'm a junior at Norfolk Christian Schools, and I just really wanted to express how much the Vivian C. Mason Center would be crucial to teams with a purpose. Since teams with a purpose has taken over the center, well, not taken over the center, but for the summer, for Camp Inspired for the last two years, the youth have been given an opportunity to lead, and I understand what really goes on behind the scenes of running a successful organization, getting involved in various community events, and raising productive citizens. Going from that, I've lived in the area for most of my life, and I know teams with a purpose has made me a better person. I've become more responsible, I've learned how to have better time management, and it also has taught me how to be a peer leader, because in the organization, we as teens have to teach each other the right way. So for that reason, I believe that teams with a purpose is a very outstanding organization. I thank you all for your time.
Sure, thanks for coming down.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
What happens to the homework center? Is it gonna be coexisting? You know, we have a group that uses it for after-school tutoring, will it still be coexisting with that group?
Yes, sir, council, I'm ready to roll.
Okay, thank you.
Nathan Richardson?
Yes, I will.
Okay, all right, thank you, thanks, thank you all for coming down, we appreciate it. Okay, you can call the roll, please.
Have an ordinance approving a lease agreement between the city and teams with a purpose, the movement and authorizing the execution of the lease agreement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Win.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. And I just, I just want to make one comment, this facility would not be open for the use that it is being made into, were it not for many years ago, Mr. Riddick insisting that we have these sort of resources.
Thank you.
And so there's a lot of good that's occurred. Public hearing four.
Five.
Five, I'm sorry, that's right.
Public hearing five scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on July 24, 2012, on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend Section 12-8 discontinuation of non-conforming uses of the zoning ordinance, clarify requirements for continuing, for continu, for continuation of non-conforming uses. And I have an ordinance for that, to amend and reordain sections 12-9 of the zoning ordinance to clarify that resumption of a non-conforming use shall only be permitted when all applicable permits and licenses have been properly obtained. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Win.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye. Public hearing six, please.
Public hearing six, scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on July 10, 2012, on the application of Advantage Investments LLC to amend the general plan to remove language referencing the extension of Robin Hood Road from the Transportation Chapter map and to change land use designation from industrial transportation utility to commercial office for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of Simpson Street from the western line of Chesapeake Boulevard, Westwood Lee County Street, and for changes zoning from C1 limited commercial to conditional C2 corridor commercial district. And by votes of 6-0, 4-2, and 6-0, Planning Commission recommends approval of these three applications.
All right, we have seven members of the public who are signed up to address the council on this matter. All I ask, please, is that when I call your name, if you'll come to the podium, identify yourself for the record by giving us your full name and your present home address, and then please limit your remarks to three minutes. Sully Callahan.
Good evening, members of council, my name is F. Sullivan Callahan, my address is 327 Duke Street, Norfolk, Virginia. I represent Advantage Investment LLC and request the change that you had before you today. Just to start out, these folks have been at this process since about February of last year, and have tried to do everything that they could to satisfy the requirements of the city. We have closed the street, many, or have acquired the fee in the street, and in order for us to operate a restaurant at this location, you've got to have the street closed so that we have the necessary parking, so that we can operate a restaurant. I have received from Bobby King with Harvey Lindsay Commercial Real Estate, a lease for the premises, which would commence, is subject, obviously, to you all's approval, to be able to operate a restaurant. Mr. Thomas Dodomas operates a couple of restaurants in the City of Norfolk and plans to operate one there with additional approval that he would have to receive from council. In amending the plan, the plan required that you would go through Robin Hood, and it would come across the railroad tracks a little bit further down. I think amending the plan is in the best interest, because the railroad and the city has a lot, a substantial amount of work at the Chesapeake Crossing there, and I don't know if the city would do any more work down at the other end, or if the railroad would allow another crossing to take place there. As far as the, the street is concerned, although we have the fee in the street, obviously we need what you all have in the street for us to be able to operate that, to have the necessary parking. I don't believe, and I would stand to be corrected by Mr. Duke, that the street is wide enough to meet the commercial traffic that you would possibly put on that street to go back into that neighborhood, and so I think that, in that sense, I don't think that it makes for the best use. Lastly, we're asking to change the zoning so that we can operate a restaurant. The Estorbrook Civic League is here, they are for it, they want to have a nice family-run restaurant. The Estorbrook area, because of the influence of Ms. LeBeau and other people in the Civic League, have done a nice job in revitalizing that area, and this will give them a place to go to socialize with their neighbors. And I would ask that each of these requests be approved by the city, and I'll be glad to answer any additional questions if I can.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Callahan. John Richardson?
Yeah, Frame, members of council, my name is John Richardson, I'm at 2101 Parks Avenue, Suite 700 in Virginia Beach. I represent Jalaz LLC. We're a neighboring parcel of property, and our concern is not with any of the other, the other two items requested by the applicant, but is with the street closure. I have a diagram I can give the members of council that would be helpful to show you the location of our property.
I think we saw it down, we've, and we talked about it in the formal meeting, we knew this was coming up.
All right, sir, thank you. My client's been in business there as B&amp;L Machinery for 22 years. He bought, and his daughter Liliana, Mr. Gilbert Lozano, bought the property many years ago, and he operates his business there. He bought parcels A and B. Parcel A is where the business is. Parcel B is an acre and a half parcel that he has planned at retirement. He, they had offered it for sale some years back, but the economy went sour, and so they've taken it off the market, but the hope is that at some point, that property can be sold to a third-party purchaser who would then use it for business purposes, it is zoned industrial. The problem for the, for my clients is that if the street is closed, any user's gonna have to go through the neighborhood, up Amherst, and then they would have to grant an easement across A to get to B. If Simpson is open, and of course, if it's closed, that won't occur, but if Simpson is to be, is open at some point in the future, then that could occur, and the traffic could come off of Chesapeake, straight up Simpson to the commercial site. The staff recommendation is not to approve the street closure, Planning Commission recommended that it be approved. The staff comment that we find most telling is this, it says to avoid diverting industrial traffic through residential neighborhood, the city would consider building the street segment to provide access to the industrial site without forcing industrial traffic through a residential neighborhood, which we think is what would occur. We have no opposition to the business in and of itself, it's simply what will impact my client, and the statute does state that it should be considered, the inconvenience to neighboring parcels should be considered. The state code authorizes council to appoint viewers to determine if the inconvenience, if any inconvenience might result, and we would certainly suggest to council that might be a wise course, is to have three to five viewers appointed, as authorized by the state code, to view the site and make a recommendation to council. Absent that, again, we have no opposition to the restaurant in and of itself, we simply are opposed to what we believe would be a lost value to our property and the utilization of our property. My clients would be happy to answer any questions, as would I.
Maybe in a minute, thank you.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Frame.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Paul Jimenez?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Paul Jimenez, I'm an agent for
I'm an agent for Advantage Investments, and my address is 3847 Lenore Circle. I just wish to bring to the attention to council and so forth that this has been a long duration of an endeavor to follow the city planning's directives to get to this point where we are now. Certainly, I'm glad to be at these crossroads, and we feel that, uh, the operation of a restaurant, which we currently have a tenant, who is, uh, Jesse, who is a son-in-law of Mr. Thomas Dodomas, would be a great operator, not only for this location, but be an asset to the community. And if we're unable to assemble this paper street with the 3351 and 3353 Chesapeake Boulevard, the economic viability of this location is nonexistent because we have no parking, none. So, it's a vital consideration from you to grant us its usage of this property, to use it as a restaurant, which gratefully, we have the support of the Civic League and the surrounding community, and we feel like this would be of an interest to the community and an asset to the community and a wonderful, welcome establishment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Eloise LeBeau?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And you wonderful Members of Council, I'm buttering you up, I hope. And our new City, uh, City Manager Jones is happy to have you here. My name is Eloise LeBeau. I live at 3501 Orange Street in Norfolk. I have lived in my residence for 51 years, and I am recently retired from the Estorbrook Civic League as president after 25 years. We have invited the Norfolk Federation of Civic League to come tonight to support us. We have some people back here, thank you for coming. We have been partners with the Federation for 30 years, we've always worked well together, and we always will. About three years ago, Mr. Paul Jimenez came to the Civic League to ask for our support of closing Simpson Street and rezoning a small piece of property about 35 feet, which is under a building, most of it, for space to build a parking lot for landscaping in an area they wanted very much to have a, a restaurant in, and we wanted it because it was a closed bar that had been there for years. There was a bar at this location before, I met, it, the bar was there before I moved there in 1961. We put up with it for many years. They finally left the building, and it was left vacant for a long time. The whole shopping area was empty for most of this time. We now have a beauty shop, a print shop, and Kroll's Lock &amp; Key Shop has recently moved in there. Things are looking up. You can make it better. Mr. Jimenez has never given up. He continues to work to make our neighborhood a better place to live. He has found us an outstanding tenant. Mr., I can't get this name right, I'm sure, Dor, Doris? He's owner and operator of the Ship's Cabin Restaurant, uh, the Little Creek Diner, and has recently, uh, gotten the Mom &amp; Pop Place in Bayview. He and his family are planning on having a family-style restaurant with walk, with walk-in, of course, and, um, with this nice parking lot that we hope to have, with this land you're gonna help us get. We all look forward to this, we've needed it. That part of our town has been really blighted and bad and empty, and you're losing money, we're all losing everything. Uh, I'm getting old, I wanna, I don't wanna see my, my part of town go down before I go. We are looking forward to this parking lot, uh, with the shrubberies and the trees and the flowers and a place to walk. Like I said in the other thing, maybe even a little bench or two. But please, please support this. We thank you, and I would like everybody that is here to support us to please stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Eloise. Ricky Ross?
Good evening, the Mayor Frame and distinguished Members of City Council and City Manager Jones. My name is Ricky L. Ross, and I am residing at 6830 Wandwood Avenue in Norfolk, and, um, I'm part of Ward Five, um, Ward Three, I'm sorry, and Ward, Super Ward Seven, in the Rosemont Voting, Voting precinct. I'm here tonight to support, um, the Estorbrook on behalf of the Norfolk Federation of Civic Leagues, in which I'm president. Had a chance to visit the site that is in question, uh, with Ms. LeBeau on the 22nd of, uh, last month, and had a lot of trouble keeping up with her because she was really walking, so, I actually toured the area on foot with her, and from my judgment and everything, because prior to this being approved by our, our board, and I went down there with her just to put a bird's eye view on it, and I will be in full agreement with keeping that as a parking lot because the narrow, and I think it was one of the gentleman that came up here early, uh, Mr. Callahan, the narrow streets are very, such that I can't see a truck going through there. I was driving a Hyundai Elantra, and I tried to make a 360-degree turn off of County Street, um, while Ms. LeBeau and I were driving down there, and the way the street dips on the end towards the curb, I can just imagine, uh, a large truck being in there. And on that particular day, we did happen to see a large moving truck in that area, and if you can just go down there yourself and see the damage that's done to the curb sides when those trucks go through there, and I know they come down Amherst because that's the way that they get into the B&amp;L, um, machine location, but going around those corners and whatnot like this, you have a lot of damage that's done to the curb side, and I can just imagine what it would be like if you were to open up Simpson, coming across, um, Chesapeake Boulevard, going, going just by the corner of that building, you would eliminate, just as the gentleman said early, uh, earlier, Mr. Jimenez, you would eliminate all their possible parking, and you would just have nothing but, uh, inconvenience for the neighbors whose, whose narrow por, narrow portion on their side of the fence is so close to the streets right now, um, I can't see any traffic going down there, much less industrial traffic. So, on behalf of the Norfolk Federation of Civic Leagues, we do fully support, um, the Estorbrook Civic League's, um, vote in having this to be a parking lot and a family restaurant, and so far, um, I believe it's the good thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Burford. William Jackson?
Good evening, Mayor Frame.
Good evening.
Members of the council, uh, Mr. Jones, City Manager. My name's William D. Jackson, Senior. I live at 3709 Buckingham Street in Norfolk, in the Estorbrook section of Norfolk. I am the treasurer of the Estorbrook Civic League, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Estorbrook Civic League and its Board of Directors. The decision confronting the council is a difficult one. For the past year and a half, we have had meetings with the owners of the property where the former Estorbrook Inn was located. Some of us even toured the renovated kitchen, um, where the site for the retro diner was going to be located. This thing got drug out so long that they bellied out and went somewhere else. Then we heard that there was not enough room for parking, uh, to allow the restaurant to open. We were hoping for a nice family restaurant would be opened in the neighborhood. In addition, the owners of B&amp;L Machine and Fabrication, a business at the end of Amherst Street that employs 17 people, came and talked to the board about their dilemma with the restaurant being going in there, with the closing of Simpson Street. They would not have access to an undeveloped parcel of property should they ever want to expand their business. Both groups and the Estorbrook community will be impacted by the decision made here tonight. In addition, we appreciate the extensive analysis of this problem by the Norfolk Department of Planning, and that had been elaborated by Mr. Frank Duke at the City Council meeting, uh, on June 26, 2012. Ideally, we have hoped for a decision that would allow all parties to have their needs met. The Estorbrook Civic League has voted to give our approval to the application of Advantage Investments LLC to amend the general plan of Norfolk, 1992, to remove the language referencing extension of Robin Hood Road from, from the Transportation Chapter and the map, and to change the land use designation from industrial transportation utility to commercial office, and B, for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of Simpson Street from the western line of Chesapeake Boulevard westward to County Street, and C, for the change of zoning from C1 limited commercial district to commercial C2 corridor commercial district. In conclusion, we support safe, clean, viable communities, and support jobs and healthy living, and we're working to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Esteline, Jesse Esteline is here to answer questions if we have any. Okay, that concludes the list of folks who have signed up to address the council. Are there any questions for anybody, comments, we're ready to vote?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. How many, the amount of parking spaces?
Let me speak to Mr. Duke.
Yeah.
Frank?
Frank. When they put the application in for the restaurant itself, how many parking spaces are gonna be required for the number of seats that they want to accommodate?
Well, the number, the number of parking spaces that would be required are tied to the number of tables that they would have. Uh, it's tied to the seats in the table, uh, the seats with the tables, and I want to say, looking for my site plan, that the plans that have been submitted do barely meet that requirement. This will be a very small establishment because of limited space for parking. Uh, they are showing, uh, seven parking spaces.
That they would need?
On the plan, that's the maximum they can get on this site with the street closure. The building takes up virtually the entire site, so with the additional, uh, land associated with the street right-of-way, they're able to get that parking. Without this, the street closure, they have no parking.
Okay.
They have absolutely no parking?
That's correct.
But with the street closure, they would only be able to get seven spaces?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, if we voted to do that, we would impact the potential expansion of the existing business, the industrial business, just for seven parking spaces?
That's correct.
And then, uh, and looking at the aerial here, I was just wondering, who owns the land, uh, along the railroad track, uh, going, if, looking at the aerial, it would be the le, to the left of the area that has the red, uh, graded area there?
Yes, sir.
Is that Norfolk Southern land, or?
The, the railroad right-of-way that you're seeing on this map does, does belong to the, the railroad.
Norfolk Southern, okay. And, uh, and how did the, uh, former, I guess you would know this, how did the former tender, a tenant accommodate parking?
At the time that they were in place, we did not have the parking requirements that we have now.
Okay.
And then, because once they opened up, they are allowed to remain in business, uh, without providing parking unless the business is closed, uh, and abandoned for more than two years.
They had no parking?
They were using the city right-of-way for parking, but they have, had no parking on their own property. The part, the only way that you can get parking on this site with the building is to use the right-of-way, and this was brought to our attention when, um, Mr. Jimenez came in and first began talking to us about the site, because that, that's when we realized that, that this is going to be a challenge. There is no way to get parking without closing the right-of-way.
And what, what is the potential use for the vacant property back there? I know it's industrial, but what kind of thing can go in there?
You'd be looking at any of a variety of, of, um, industrial uses, that's, that's zoned I2, so, or I think that, no, I'm sorry, that's I1, so it would be lighter industrial uses. You could have warehouse uses, for example.
And, and if we close the road and the neighborhood was in favor of, which I think that, say they are, that if whatever access was needed could come through the neighborhood, nowhere down the road, further, no pun, but could we close it? In other words, could the neighborhoods come back in five years and say, "We don't want industrial traffic through here to access this man's property"?
The only way you would be able to avoid having the industrial property go through the neighborhood if this right-of-way is closed, would be to acquire that property in the future.
So, we couldn't come, they couldn't come back and?
You don't, you would not have that option.
People say, "Now, that was them, this is us." So, there would always be some access to that property?
Yes, sir.
Frank, if anything else goes there now, in that location, do they still have, I mean, is there anything that could go there? I guess that's the question I should ask.
This is a fair.
Is there anything that could go there with the parking the way that it is, which is none?
If they came in with a small use, a small retail use, uh, that would be able to go in using C1, which is the zoning on this, that use would be grandfathered because, for a certain amount of parking, they would not have to provide the additional parking. It is the rezoning and the change of use category from the small retail-type use, neighborhood retail-type use, to the restaurant that drives the need to meet parking requirements.
So, what, so you're saying, but you said there's no parking now?
They would be.
There's commercial uses that don't require any parking?
There is no commercial use that does not require parking, but we have businesses throughout the city of Norfolk that were developed, they're granted, the site is considered to be grandfathered, and so we would grandfather them for the minimal amount of parking that they would have based on that building size, and no change in zoning and continuation of a, uh, use that would be allowed with that zoning.
How long has it been vacant?
I, I don't know, I would, I would defer to Ms. LeBeau, um, as to how long the property's been vacant. I know it has been vacant since?
You heard me?
Yes, ma'am, as to how long it's been vacant.
That's, that's okay, Eloise, it's, it's.
I left my hearing aids at home, and I don't know, and what, what did you wanna know?
How long has the Estorbrook Inn been vacant?
At least three years.
Or, did you mean the lot?
And I keep forgetting them.
Okay.
It was robbery or murder or something, I mistake.
Uh, but it, it has been a bad place for a long time, we need this.
Thank you, thank you, Eloise, thanks.
And has there been any other interest, Frank, by, other than restaurants?
No, ma'am, the building is designed as a restaurant, and so the only uses that have contacted us have been restaurants, and yes, I would agree, we have had other, uh, people looking to do a restaurant that, that walked away from the site.
Real quick question, it goes along with Councilman Riddick. Next to the railroad tracks, looking at aerial map, right where, um, Chesapeake Boulevard and the railroad tracks meet, there's already a building there that's industrial, that has cars parked through there. Could the property owner behind this enter into an, uh, agreement with them, and if, I guess, um, that road actually cuts through behind that property, and eventually, if they ever wanted to have access to the property that way, they could be granted, um, an easement to be able to cross over that piece?
They would have to acquire that cross-access easement, so that would be a transaction between two private property owners.
But they could.
They could, but there would be no, nothing to compel that other property owner to enter into that agreement.
Right.
If it, if they felt that cross-access easement would interfere with their operations.
Do we know who that other property owner?
I'm sorry.
Advantage, it's not, they don't own that whole?
I, I don't know who that property owner is.
But they're just, looking at the aerial map, it looked like there's enough space between the railroad tracks and that building to actually create a driveway to that property in the back from Chesapeake Boulevard.
Right.
If, if that property was ever developed, and we do have the, there is a, a street, paper street back there that they could apply for, I guess, um, to have access that way if they had that agreement with the property owner.
Yeah, the remainder of that paper street is the continuation of Simpson Street, because this, they're only looking to close a small portion of it.
Frank, tell me, the issue is that they have a part, they have an additional parcel that they eventually wanna sell.
Yes, sir.
And they don't want the, the traffic coming through their existing property.
I, I would have to defer to the people who are opposed.
I'm assuming that they have parking there now?
Uh, the aerial, aerial is showing that there are a, a few cars parked on the site, yes, sir.
Okay, why couldn't they just switch or sell a smaller parcel? I mean, we're talking about clo, you know, they wanna impact this small business when they have the ability, the landmaster, they have to switch their parking, and it might cut the site, the potential site down, but it will give access for the existing company and the future company to have access out to the, uh, the other street without negatively impacting, uh, the community, uh, Amherst. And so, again, like I said, if you, you're talking about bringing 18-wheelers back there, I don't care who the company is, if they, if they see that they can't get through, they're not gonna make that type of investment anyway. And so, again, it, I, I just think that if you're talking flex office, flex office or, you know, what have you, you know, that doesn't negatively impact traffic going through the community, but I don't think that you can attract somebody with 18-wheelers to come back there because they won't be able to get through, and the city has no responsibility to widen the roads or tell people to park, that they can't park on either side of the street. And so, uh, again, I, you know, we, we've been working in that area for quite some time, 10 years, we worked with that gas station on Chesapeake Boulevard, working to try to clean up that and get a viable tenant in there. This, this parcel has been, uh, uh, vacant for quite some time, since I've been on council, and so, you know, we have an opportunity to breed life in that end of the corridor, so I think it's incumbent upon us to do so.
It was, I mean, in, in granting the closing of the street-
Yeah.
And I'm looking, looking-
Close there.
Yeah, looking at the aerial, and, oh, looking at the aerial and knowing the property, oh, and, and the aerial that I'm looking at is the area that has the red graded, uh, colored area, and, and that would be east, on the east side, which would be the east side of Simpson. That, that is ours all the way to the railroad track?
Yes, sir.
Chesapeake Boulevard all the way over.
That, that is right-of-way that you're seeing there, yes, sir.
So that wooded area right there belongs to the city? It looks like it, I can't tell.
Well, I can't tell if the underlying title belongs to the city, I don't know that, but I, but there, it is unopened right-of-way.
Mm-hmm, because for the sake of, you know, making all people happy, it's not a gem lot, but this business is the closest portion, uh, as far as practical use, of course, you know, you could, one of the other companies could say the same thing. But if that were our property, I'm just wondering, should, could we give them an easement should they ever decide to, and, and, and what I'm speaking of, I'm speaking of the industrial area, should they ever decide to use that industrial area to, uh, create, uh, new parking opportunities so that they'll, uh, if trucks did come down Amherst and would turn into their property, every place where they have parking, that if we could, you know, kind of give them, you know, some type of consideration or easement, then that could create new parking some kind of way should they ever decide to do it. You know, I'm very familiar with this particular piece of property for, uh, the restaurant. I've always, uh, wondered why it wasn't open. There is another piece of property called a Lafayette Grill, which is up, you know, just beyond, uh, uh, down, uh, Lafayette Boulevard where there is actually no parking.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's just a neighborhood place, you know? And, uh, I'm sort of in favor of these little neighborhood places, but I don't think that we can encumber the possible expansion of this industrial area without being able to give them some type of relief should they try to, uh, do some, uh, expansion, so, I don't know.
And, and I'm sorry, I need you to correct myself, the property, the vacant property is, it is, I said I three originally, which is heavy industrial, that is what this is, the vacant parcel. It's not light industrial, it's heavy industrial zoning.
I understand it would have to, you could possibly, you could, you could-
Property can always be rezoned, sir.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Duke. All right.
Call the roll.
I have three ordinances for this, Mr. President. First is an ordinance to amend the general plan of Norfolk nineteen ninety-two so as to change the land use designation for property located at thirty-three fifty-one to thirty-three fifty-three Chesapeake Boulevard from industrial transportation utility to commercial office and to modify the long-range transportation improvements map. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
You know, I don't really think that I'm really capable of making the right decision, although I would make a decision. Uh, I see the prudence in trying to give this, um, piece of property, uh, make it available for a restaurant, but I just don't think that we can encumber, you know, the other company should they decide to do something with it. So I'm sort of, sort of in the middle, so, but I'll vote aye on this particular ordinance.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Um. Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Second is an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of Simpson Street and authorizing the conveyance of any interests the city may have in the underlying fee of said portion of Simpson Street. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Make this clear, Brett, this is closing, vacating.
Yes, closing, vacating, and discontinuing.
Okay, aye.
Mr. Riddick?
And I'll vote no on this ordinance.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
This one gives me heartburn, too. Um, I've looked at this thing a couple of different times and gone out to the location, and, um, I listened to the comments. Um, it troubles me that there's no parking, and, um, I know the community's wishes for this space. I also know that I would hate to close the street and have commercial property, commercial trucks going up and down my neighborhood if I lived there. Um, but given the strong community support and the neighborhood support and the Federation support, um, it gives me heartburn, but I vote aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And the third is an ordinance to rezone property located at thirty-three fifty-one to thirty-three fifty-three Chesapeake Boulevard from C one, limited commercial to conditional C two, corridor commercial district. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
For a point of clarity, Brett, as of, as for matter, for a point of clarity, this third vote?
Rezones the property-
Right.
-to corridor commercial.
Okay, aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I vote aye for that.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Thank y'all for coming down here tonight, Mr. John.
You know, but I, I really do think that we need to put a footnote somewhere that later on, should this company that has the industrial area-
Get a buyer.
-want to expand-
Absolutely.
-that we look at the area, which, I'm looking at a better picture than that, which is wooded, uh, and if it belongs to the city, then we should try to make sure that we remember this day to kind of help them out when it, it, when it comes, comes around.
That's in the record, we'd entertain something sooner rather than later, too.
So if it comes around, I just wouldn't wait forever.
Some right-of-way.
I'd come back as quick as I can, you know, because-
Time.
Absolutely.
Council could change and everything could change, you know? So while it's fresh, come back and try to get this done, I would suggest.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless I missed it, they're the owners of the land, they could build a street.
Yeah, they could.
Okay? If that profitable to them, they could build a street, they just don't want the person going through their existing property once they sell it.
All right, public hearing seven, please.
Public hearing seven scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on August twenty-eight, twenty-twelve, to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot, John J. Chapel Senior and John J. Chapel Junior on property located at South Southwest Twenty-Sixth Street.
You could have been out of here, but yeah.
I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to John J. Chapel Senior and John J. Chapel Junior of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city of Norfolk, and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. PH, public hearing eight.
Public hearing eight scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on, on August twenty-eight, twenty-twelve, to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Charlene Wimbush on property located at eight fifty-nine Washington Avenue. I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Charlene Wimbush of a certain parcel of property, uh, and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, public hearing nine.
Can I say something, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that these, these gem lots, the frequency that we do these, I want to make sure that these things are getting recorded and, and, and court records.
Sure. Okay. Public hearing nine scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on August twenty-eight, twenty-twelve, to hear comments on the conveyance of the city's interests on property known as ninety-five hundred through ninety-five-ten Fourteenth Bay Street to Fulton Bank by quitclaim deed. I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of the city's interests, if any, in certain lots off Fourteenth Bay Street known as ninety-five hundred through ninety-five-ten Fourteenth Bay Street to Fulton Bank in aid by quitclaim deed. Dispense with the charter requirement-
Is it Frank to, or is this Frank, or is this, who is this? John Kiefer? Do you know what this is about, or? Mr. Attorney.
The, the dearth of information may be due to the fact that that's why it's before you.
Okay.
This appears to be no man's land.
Right. Isn't it in the water?
Um, no, I don't believe it's in the water, but we don't have any record of ownership, but that, uh, the interested party has had a title exception, and so that we've reviewed it and, and don't see any reason for us to be owning it, so this would quitclaim it so that we don't know that we own it, but it would clear the title.
It's not a eight-clock deal, is it?
No, Mr. Clark is not involved in that.
I should have said, is, it's eventually going to be in the water, but what, what is their interest with this? Because I looked on the aerial, are they trying to assemble the property for apartments, or was there any indication of why they want this?
Um, it, it is for their use and development, but I, I don't know right now if it's apartments or, or anything bigger than that. I, I admit that, um, that's the reason it clears title, but I don't have the rest of the information, so that, I don't know of any pressing needs, so that if you wanted answers to those questions, I think we could get them.
Just, I, we don't make any warranties with a quitclaim.
No warrant.
So it's just, this is-
We don't know that we own it.
Okay.
Okay, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Is anybody bothered by the fact that we don't know whether we own it? Does that bother anybody, or this happens all the time?
I think that's common more with all-
I wonder, is there anything I don't know I own? Have we just, oh, well, aye.
I think it's, I think it's common, though, with the Prince of San County-
You never know.
-acquisition, I think there's quite a few properties along that-
Yeah, especially the old Prince of San County.
Yeah.
Some of that.
So we're going to do, we're going to quit, quit, quitclaim and own this, right, take title to this?
Yes, this would transfer titles to the property owner that wants to add it to his existing.
And he would pay taxes, why are we paying taxes right now?
Yes, yes, it's going to a taxpayer.
Okay.
Right, it would clearly make it taxable.
So just when, just, I'm, I'm curious, when we get this document and it says financial impact, and it doesn't say that there's any financial impact, I think that it's helpful to know that whoever puts this together, that it, it should say that it will go on the tax rolls, because that is a financial impact.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure that got to Deb Bud.
All right.
Okay.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, public hearing ten.
Public hearing ten scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on August twenty-eight, twenty-twelve, to hear comments on a lease agreement between the city and Friends of the Pagoda and Oriental Garden Foundation at property located at two sixty-five West Haswell Street.
And, um, Madeline Sly is here, as is Marion Clark, to answer any questions. Jack Kavanaugh is a proponent, but I don't see Mr. Kavanaugh here. So do we have any questions, comments? All right, thanks, Madeline, thank you, okay, call.
I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement between the city of Norfolk as landlord and Friends of the Pagoda and Oriental Garden Foundation as tenant for lease of that certain property owned by the city known as the Pagoda Building located at two sixty-five West Haswell Street in Norfolk, Virginia, and authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Um, did anybody else hear from citizens that were concerned about the noise at the Pagoda and late nights? Any else hear about that? Because I couldn't find that that was part of this lease agreement, is that, nose, noise ordinances or late nights noise, is that part of this, or is this purely a financial issue?
Lease agreement.
If you can continue operating.
So in other words, then, the complaints that are received about the time, that'd be under another matter, that'd be correct?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the lease agreement.
Um, I don't know exactly how to answer the question here, I know there are some people over time who've objected to some of the things that happened there, but they have, vast majority of, they have a, a number of events there that are well-attended and most of the community seems to enjoy, I mean, it's really been a, it was a, I would say most of the community has been very supportive, but I don't, I mean, the people-
Apparently there was a meeting this week with citizens that were concerned about this, so, but I couldn't see anything in the lease that related to this, so I'll vote aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Okay, thank you for coming down, appreciate it. Uh, C one, please.
Approve C one, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R one? R one is an ordinance accepting the dedication of a perpetual fixed-width utility easement over certain property owned by Centerra Hospitals and authorizing the city manager to accept the deed of easement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R two? An ordinance to amend and reordain chapter thirty-nine point one of the Norfolk City Code nineteen seventy-nine so as to add new definitions and a new article to provide regulations for fats, oils, and grease discharges from food service establishments to the sewer system. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
I was excited about this, this was great, aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R four? An ordinance approving the acceptance of the Norfolk Adult Drug Treatment Court Grant Award of one hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars from the Supreme Court of Virginia for the Adult Drug Court Program, and program fees up to fifteen thousand dollars, and appropriating the grant funds and program fees, and authorizing the expenditure of seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from previously appropriated funds as a local cash match. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5.
A resolution authorizing the Department of Utilities to provide water and sewer services to a lessee or tenant in the name of the lessee or tenant with such fees and charges applicable for water and sewer services without a written authorization form from the property owner. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Burford?
Can you explain that?
Um, I, I might know more about that one unless you'd like it.
Go for it.
Okay. The General Assembly was petitioned by landlords whose property were being leaned for tenants who walked on the bill. So they thought that was unfair. So the General Assembly has given us this choice to, to do this or to do another route where we would lean the property, and we've got over 99% collection rate without leaning the property.
Okay, I got it.
So, so that we're maintaining the status quo because the General Assembly requested some changes.
Okay, go ahead.
Adopt the resolution. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R6.
R6 is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a gas station sales-only on property located at 6100 Tidewater Drive. By 6-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right. And Mr. Pickrell is here to answer any questions. Is, on behalf of the applicant, as, and Janice Anderson, the applicant, is here. There's no opposition. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R6A.
6A is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit a retail goods establishment to operate after midnight on property located at 6100 Tidewater Drive. By 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. 6A.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption on property located at 6100 Tidewater Drive, and by 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R7.
Let him off easy, Mr. Burford. You have it, did?
I mean, I was waiting.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an eating and drinking establishment on property located-
Sure you'd want to hold this.
12 Monarch Way. By 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R8.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an eating and drinking establishment on property located at 7631 Granby Street. By 7-0 vote, Planning